Good evening and welcome to the Monday, January 25th, 2021, meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with this posting, the Hillsborough Township Board of Education will be conducting its regular meeting, starting with closed session at 6 o'clock, and in accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting was provided on January 21st, 2021, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier News. Mr. Mahmood, may we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mrs. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
And Ms. Trheo?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. I'd like to have a motion to move into executive session, and I'll read the notice. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as committed in Section 7B of the Act. Resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough, the County of Somerset, and State of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are grievance matter and two leave requests. And are we doing the and the sick bank and also the settlement agreement? And when the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public, wait, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stats. And thank you, Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're now in executive session, and we will be back at 7:30 for the regular meeting. Thank you very much. They count backwards? Okay, good to go. Okay, thank you very much. Welcome back to the Public Board Meeting of January 25th, 2021. Mr. Mahmood, we are back from executive session. Mr. Mahmood, may we please have a roll call?
Thank you, sure. Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Marini?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
And Ms. Trheo?
Here.
We have a call.
Can we now all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to move on to Section 6, the correspondence that was received is listed. Yeah. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I missed that one. Thank you very much, Dr. Antunes. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mahmood for the board oath for Mr. Benjamin Kidd.
Thank you, Ms. Trheo. At this point, we'd like to play the swearing-in of Mr. Kidd, which was done previously, recorded. So, once we're able to do that, we will then bring in Mr. Kidd as an active panelist and congratulate him on his election to the school board. So, Mr. Handler, can we play that video, please?
I, please state your name. I, Benjamin Kidd. Do solemnly swear or affirm? Do solemnly swear. That I will support? That I will support. The Constitution of the United States? The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey? And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And I will bear true faith? And I will bear true faith. And allegiance? And allegiance. To the same? To the same. And to the governments? And to the governments. Established in the United States? Established in the United States. And in this state? And in this state. Under the authority of the people? Under the authority of the people. So help me God. So help me God. Okay, thank you. I, please state your name. I, Benjamin Kidd. Do solemnly swear or affirm? Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I possess the qualifications? That I possess the qualifications. Prescribed by law? Prescribed by law. For the office of? For the office of? Member of Board of Education? Member of Board of Education. And that I will, and I am not disqualified? And I am not disqualified. Nor disqualified? Nor disqualified. Due to a criminal conviction or offense? Due to a criminal conviction or offense. And that I will faithfully? And that I will faithfully? Impartially? Impartially. And justly? And justly. Perform? Perform. All the duties? All the duties. Of that office? Of that office. According to the best of my ability? According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Yep, I'm on. Welcome.
Well, thanks, Mr. Kidd. Thank you, Mr. Mahmood, and welcome to the board. So nice to have you here. I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the correspondence that was received is listed on the screen. We had several pieces of correspondence, and I believe that there was one piece that may have been missing from Mrs. Schatz on January 7th. And I did try to respond to all of the emails, and I believe that there will be some clarification coming up with the superintendent's report, which is the next item on the agenda. So go ahead, Dr. -- thank you, Dr. Antunes.
Thank you, Mrs. Trheo. I am thrilled to share the extraordinary accomplishment of Hillsborough High School student Aravind Krishnan, who was named one of the top 300 scholars in the 80th Regeneron Science Talent Search. The nation's oldest and most prestigious science and mathematics competition for high school seniors. The Regeneron Science Talent Search provides a student a national stage to present original research and celebrates the hard work and novel discoveries of young scientists. The scholars were selected from 1,760 applicants, received from 611 high schools across 49 states. Congratulations, Aravind. Congratulations also to social studies teacher Bob Fenster, who is the recipient of the Gagnon Prize that is presented to a K-12 history teacher, who exhibits exceptional historical scholarship that has made a significant contribution to the promotion of history education. I would also like to share that it is that next week is National School Counseling Week, and to thank all of our school counselors for their commitment to students, parents, and their colleague teachers. The role of the school counselors is multifaceted and an integral part of the educational process. They help students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents. They help parents focus on ways to encourage personal and social growth for their children, and they work with their peers to find ways for students to set realistic goals and to reach their full potential. Thank you to each and every one of you for all that you do. Tonight's agenda includes two important proclamations, and I will read both of them. The first proclamation honored and recognized January 19th, 2021, as the National Day of Racial Healing in our country. This proclamation urges all citizens to promote racial healing in our country and reminds us that racial healing is crucial to the educational, social, mental, and overall well-being of all of our children. I will read that proclamation. Proclamation, National Day of Racial Healing. Whereas we have all witnessed racial divisiveness rising in America's urban, rural, suburban, and tribal communities today that threatens the very core of this great country's unified front. And whereas, just like those who came before us, it is our duty to protect the children of this country and maintain communities in which they may all be given the opportunity to succeed. And whereas, we understand and recognize that there is a racial divide in our country, and we must all work earnestly to heal the wounds created by racial, ethnic, and religious bias and build an equitable and just society so that all children can thrive. And whereas, children have the right to be provided every opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive in nurturing environments that don't violate their safety, dignity, and humanity. And whereas, every single person has the capability to make a simple change within him or herself that can have a profound effect on an entire society. And whereas, if we all dedicate ourselves to the principles of truth, racial healing, and transformation, we can all bring about the necessary changes in thinking and behavior that will propel this great country forward as a unified force, where racial biases will become a thing of the past. And whereas, racial healing is a vital and crucial commitment to the education, social, mental, and overall well-being of our children. And whereas, Hillsborough Township Public Schools, in conjunction with others throughout the United States of America, acknowledges January 19th, 2021, as the National Day of Racial Healing and urges all citizens to promote racial healing and transformation in the ways that are best suited for them individually as a means to working together to ensure the best quality of life for every child. Now therefore, Hillsborough Township Public Schools hereby proclaims that this organization honors and recognizes January 19th, 2021, as the National Day of Racial Healing. The second proclamation recognizes January 2021 as School Board Recognition Month. On behalf of the entire Hillsborough community, I would like to extend a huge thank you to all of our board members for their dedication to our schools. The countless hours that you volunteer to attend committee meetings, board meetings, and other community events is gratefully appreciated. The proclamation reads: Whereas New Jersey's public schools serve nearly 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and whereas nearly 5,000 local Board of Education members in New Jersey devote countless hours without remuneration to the oversight of school district operations, including finances, policy, curriculum, and staffing. And whereas, New Jersey's local Boards of Education endeavor to meet the challenges facing public schools and help students attain the education necessary for post-secondary success so they may compete in a global economy. And whereas, local Boards of Education have contributed to New Jersey being among the leading states in academic achievement as measured by the National Assessment of Educational Progress and by district participation and student achievement in the Advanced Placement and SAT assessments. And whereas, the National School Boards Association and the New Jersey School Boards Association have declared January 2021 to be School Board Recognition Month. And whereas, by making meaningful contributions to public education, the dedicated members of local school boards have greatly enhanced the quality of life in our state through their actions and decisions on behalf of our students. Now therefore, I Philip D. Murphy, Governor of the State of New Jersey, as it reads on the resolution, hereby proclaim January 2021 a School Board Recognition Month. So again, thank you on behalf of the entire Hillsborough community. A thank you to our board members, past and present. So, as you may be aware, there is a possibility of inclement weather upon us. Pursuant to the weather forecast at this time, the district will move to an all-virtual day for tomorrow. I am not intending to utilize an emergency snow day at this point. For our approximately 504 students who have registered to take the PSATs at the high school tomorrow, at this time, the PSATs are not canceled, and we will be prepared to welcome you to sit for them. Again, at this time. Parents, remember that the PSAT is a national exam, and we are not in control of the timing or availability of dates. There are no makeup dates. However, if you do not feel comfortable driving and having your child or children drive to school, that is certainly up to you, and it is important to make the best decision for your children. Should the weather forecast change due to increased ice accumulation, which it seems to be doing right now, and we need to cancel the administration of the PSATs, a school messenger will be sent in the morning. Just in case anyone is wondering, because of the possibility of inclement weather, and in order to allow our custodial staff to prepare for tomorrow's exam and to ensure that our campuses are safe, we pivoted to a virtual board meeting this evening. Staff members, be sure to be on the lookout for an email from Mr. Callahan, and the school messenger will be sent shortly to the community. Thank you, Mrs. Trheo. That ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would actually like to invite the Chair of the HEA Pride Committee, Christina Smith. If we could elevate her to panelists so that she could chat a little bit about the postcards for kids contest that Dr. Antunes, I believe, had mentioned at the previous board meeting. And I know it takes, I know it takes a minute for it to come up. And, oh, welcome. Hi, Mrs. Smith.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for having me. Good evening. My name is Christina Smith, and I am the Second Vice President for HEA and the Chair of the HEA Pride Committee. I wanted to give you a little background about Pride and inform you of some recent events. Since 1994, the NJEA has conducted the Pride in Public Education Campaign, a statewide effort to share the successes of public education with all New Jerseians and build strong community support for and involvement in our public schools. The program provides grants to local and county education associations to plan events that bring communities and schools together. Although we generally hold in-person events, due to the pandemic, we have had to make several adjustments. In the fall, Pride usually assists the ARC in Somerville by cleaning and doing yard work at local group homes in Hillsborough. This event cannot be held in person, so we made a monetary donation to the ARC, and we hope to be able to complete this project in person in the spring. Over the past few weeks, Pride conducted a food drive to support the Food Pantry in Hillsborough. HEA members collected hundreds of items and also made a sizable monetary donation. The Food Pantry has seen an increase in needs during the pandemic, and we were happy to assist them. Pride will also be contributing to the Food Pantry in the spring. Pride is currently holding a postcards contest for students in grades 5 to 12 that draws upon our community's strength and reinforces the theme "We Are All in This Together." Students have been asked to design a postcard that embodies that theme. Three winners will be chosen, one from each school, and the winning designs will be made into postcards. Those postcards will be sent to elementary students with messages of support and celebration during these challenging times. The contest will be running until January 31st, and submissions can be sent to Each winner will also receive a $25 Amazon gift card. Pride has many future events scheduled and looks forward to working with the community to support what is best for Borough. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith, for that report and that information more about the postcards for kids. Thank you again. We will now move on to committee reports, and if I could go from the agenda, Mr. Gillette, would you please share the operations report? Thank you.
Here we go. Operations Committee met on January 12th. That was 13 days ago, I believe. So I'm just gonna say that. I'll be saying that, though, every time this year, I think. So here we go. We had several items on the agenda. We reviewed the committee norms. We talked a little bit about the budget, just some of the preliminary dates of how it's all gonna plan out. And we talked a little bit about how state aid might impact the budget. We talked for a little bit, we talked a little bit about board calls. And we all agreed to do the superintendent's evaluation. That was the most important goal that needs to be done. On tonight's agenda, you'll see the annual audit for acceptance. The important thing to report on that is that there were no findings or recommendations in the audit. This is gonna be the last audit done by, or ordered by Tim Vrabel as he's retiring. And he's been doing the audit in the district for probably like 20 years. So congratulations to him retiring. We had our architect, Mr. Wozni, was on to give us some updates about the referendum projects. Almost everything is finished from the summer work. We talked about the one concern we still, one outstanding concern of previous work that we still have out there, which is the building management system that was installed by Honeywell as part of the ESIP project. It's still not working integrated into our systems correctly. It's, we have some decisions to make. I've probably reported this previously. We're gonna need to decide whether we should continue to pursue this and resolve this with Honeywell or start with a brand-new system. We still have some time to figure that out. I know our attorney is also looking into that. And of course, as we know, we hired another legal counsel to look into pursuing that for us. One of the things we'll talk about later today, probably right at the end of committee reports, might be a good time to do it, is the proposals that I mentioned in previous meeting to repair the parking lot at Hillsborough Elementary School and to do a new roof. The cost of those together is about $2.2 million, estimated. Of course, we have no bids yet, or design work is certainly not complete. Our, both our bond counsel and our financial advisors are recommending that we do substantial part of the work, at least, under a five-year lease purchase agreement. We talked about that at Operations Committee. We also talked a little bit this morning in a meeting that I had with the board president and vice president and the administration. So I think we'll talk about that after committee reports, because I know we have our bond counsel on the call with us. So let's wait for after committee reports, maybe, and I'll get more into that and answer questions about it. Let's see. We also talked about that the electronic marquee at the high school at the corner of Raider Boulevard and Amwell Road is at the end of its life. It seems hard to believe. It seems like it was just put in, but of course, I've been here a long time, so it's probably been there a long time. We need a new one. Electronically, it's not working anymore. It's impossible to program. It glitches. It's not working right. So the recommendation from administration is to provide the funds to do that for the high school. We talked about the possibility of any of the schools as a vaccination site. But actually, the State Office of Emergency Management does not recommend schools as vaccination sites. So we, there was cold water, I guess you could say, thrown on that. The Woods Road Home and School Association is donating three water bottle filling stations for that school. These are a popular item with students and staff. And in my opinion, it's a good project for home and school associations to work on fundraising for, if you don't have a water bottle filling station in your school. That's something that the board will definitely accept, that donation for sure. So I think that's the last thing we talked about. And I don't know when we want to have Ms. Gorab come on to talk about the potential financing for the HES projects, whether now or at the end of all the committee reports. But I'm gonna turn it back over to Mrs. Trheo now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gillette. I'd like to turn to Mr. Oliver then for the HR Committee report.
Thank you. HR Committee met on January 12th. All members were in attendance. We reviewed the committee norms to start. Mr. Callahan requested review of sick bank leave request. One of the teachers, HEA, had approved it. HR Committee reviewed the request and unanimously approved it. We also received a request from Mr. Callahan in the administration for a request of two options for unpaid leave. That was reviewed by the HR Committee, and it's recommended back to the board for the season's action. We did go through our board goals in the meeting we had virtually with Gwen Thornton from the NJSPA. We got a brief overview from Mr. Mahmood and Mrs. Angeliano about where we anticipate being for the budget for the coming year, knowing that we are losing some state aid and we have had a drop in our enrollment. So we're waiting some preliminary numbers from them to get a little view from 30,000 feet, just to see where we're at. And it seems like that was a pretty quick meeting, but it did take about an hour and a half, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Oliver. Then I will turn to Ms. Maroon for the Education Committee report.
Hi, yeah, the Education Committee met. I'm gonna go off of Greg, who said 13 days ago. We were 12 days ago, thank you, so I don't have to count myself. It's on January 13th, 2021. Everybody was in attendance, all the attendees. We did go over the committee norms, and then we moved on. We did hear the budget information, the same information that was given at the other committee meetings, so I'm not really gonna go crazy into that. We also discussed what you'll see on the agenda tonight, the book adoption. We had two books for Technology, Transportation, and Engineering, grades 9 through 12. And then we also reviewed a reading literacy for grades 5, 6. We also did discuss briefly district calendar. I know everybody is anxiously awaiting. So are we. We're waiting for just one more, I guess, final look over, but we are very, very close, so hopefully everybody can just hang tight, and that'll be available as soon as possible. We discussed the National Day of Racial Healing, which Dr. Antunes also went over. We also discussed marking period 2 and 3 date changes, which I think already the public went out and is aware of, which is great. And then we also discussed the board goals, and we talked about the self-evaluation. And then we also talked about going through all of our policies to make sure that everything is equitable. And that's pretty much what we've discussed. Again, it was an hour and a half long, but it didn't seem we had too much, so that's all I got.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Maroon. I'd like to turn to Ms. Stats for the Municipal Alliance update.
Thank you, Ms. Trheo. You know, as the liaison for the Municipal Alliance, first let me make sure everybody's aware that the Municipal Alliance advocates for wellness through addiction resources and education. We met on January 8th. I just want to emphasize two things that are coming up. On this Wednesday, January 27th, at 7:00 PM, there will be a screening of the documentary, "The Upstanders," a virtual screening. And it explores cyberbullying, bullying among friends, families, coworkers, and the brain science behind it all. And on February 2nd, there will be "Minding Your Mind," virtual webinar, which is an introductory mental health education program. And it will be from both a professional viewpoint and a lived, personal experience, and will educate participants to look beyond stigma and notice warning signs of stress, anxiety, depression, and crisis. That's also at 7:00 PM. You can register for each of those, I believe, if you go to the Municipal Alliance page on the Township website. You'll have the opportunity to register for that. That's available to pretty much anyone. Probably limited, maybe, from grade 5 on up to adults. And also, I just wanted to say that in the past, the Municipal Alliance has been instrumental in holding or facilitating presentations and in-school assemblies. But going forward, we plan to have some virtual assemblies or presentations. Some of it will be part of collaboration with Somerset County, a set of other municipal alliances. So we look forward to informing people of those dates and the particulars of those. Thank you, Ms. Trheo.
Thank you, Ms. Stats, for that report. I wanted to actually circle back just a little bit, because I had forgotten that we had said at the last board meeting that we would address some of the correspondence or public comments, specifically the question regarding when staff have, when staff have to quarantine due to COVID, what is the district's policy or what is the district's practice? So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Callahan, if you could please review for the public what the district's, thank you.
Of course, Ms. Trheo. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So, and I had messaged the board as well, to maximize our ability to empower staff to reach all students, even though the federal provisions that allowed for FF-CRA leaves has expired. Staff members who meet the federal or the local Department of Health guidelines to be in quarantine and are able to perform their work functions remotely are allowed to work from home, and we certainly have teachers doing so with a substitute in school as needed. Does that clarify your question and the question that I believe was raised at the last meeting?
I think it does. Thank you very much. So staff are allowed to, they basically don't need to take a sick day, a personal sick day. They're allowed to work virtually.
Staff members who are able to work virtually, and that would include our instruction Staff members who are able to work virtually, and that would include our instructional staff, are allowed to do so. And because they're by definition working, no, that's not a sick day, and it does not count against any balance of absence reasons.
Thank you very much. And then I also wanted to address, and Dr. Antunes, please correct me if I get this wrong, there was a question, I believe, through email regarding how the district is reporting COVID numbers in the COVID updates that we all receive. And I believe that during the virtual, all virtual period after Thanksgiving, the district did not report cases of COVID in any, anybody. However, because of the confusion that happened after that Thanksgiving, all virtual period, then during the Christmas break, and then the week after Christmas, or the week after New Year's, when the district was all virtual, the district then did report any cases of students that were hybrid or virtual students that were in contact either through extracurricular activities or sports. Did I get that right?
Yes, I just want to clarify, in-person extracurriculars or athletics related to Hillsborough, not rec or anything like that. Yeah, so we adjusted a little bit based upon the feedback we received. And this is if we are made aware, which we are not always made aware. So the best that we do is how we do it. Our nurses are doing a phenomenal job with this. So as they know, they let us know, and Dr. Radwan has been helping us to spearhead that. So yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. And so I hope that clarifies some of the public's questions. So then I will move now on to the approval of minutes, the approval of the January 4th, 2021, public minutes. May I have a motion? Thank you. I didn't actually catch who that was. Oh, hi, Ms. Maroon. Thank you.
And seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And extensions?
Motion passes.
Let's see. Then may I have a motion to approve the January 11th, 2021, public meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. And the second, Ms. Staff? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Motion passes.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Mahmoud and Ms. Sangiuliano for those minutes. Thank you very much. And so now, so we do have, we would like to talk about board goals, but I think I may wait on that and open the floor up for 10.1, which is public input on the 2021, 2022 budget. And we'll perhaps start with the public first and then go to any board comments. So, well, actually, Mr. Mahmoud, were there any comments or correspondence received?
Nothing, Ms. Trujillo, in terms of emails regarding the budget. No.
Thank you very much. And then, so now I will, oh, I see Mr. Tribolski with a comment on the budget.
Okay.
Okay, so can we please elevate Mr., I mean, sorry, Dr. Tribolski to a panelist?
Yes. He should be on. Dr. Tribolski, you're muted, but you are on.
Sorry about that. Yes, I just realized I was muted. Thank you. And you'll forgive me. I have comments that are really, I guess, related in part to the budget, but also to board goals. I wasn't sure if board goals were going to be discussed this evening. So I'm happy to share my comments now, or?
Please, please, Dr. Tribolski, go ahead.
Thank you so much. So obviously, my name is Joe Tribolski, Principal of Hillsborough Middle School, but I'm also resident at 36 Fox Chase Run. But I'm rising this evening actually as a representative for a group in our community, and I'd like to speak on their behalf, with their permission this evening. The group that I'm representing is our Borough Cares. This is the Hillsborough Coalition for Anti-Racism and Equity in Schools. And in light of the proclamation that was read earlier on the National Day of Racial Healing, as the board prepares its goals for the year, as well as its budget priorities, we wanted to bring a few things to your attention. I appreciate your time. We are a group of over 50 dedicated teachers, counselors, and administrators who meet regularly to discuss how racism impacts our schools and our greater community, and for that matter, our country right now. We are grateful to work in a district that supports the work we have been doing over the course of the last seven months. Throughout this time together, we have examined our biases and challenged each other with courageous conversations. Several members of our group, you should know, are also involved with two student groups, the Student Diversity Initiative with the high school, and HMS Cares at the middle school. We formed our group in June of last spring after George Floyd's murder and the subsequent racially motivated hip events that occurred involving some of our Hillsborough High School students last spring. We're proud to represent a district that has formed a strategic plan that aims to, and I quote from that plan, "ensure that programs and services and facilities not only meet the needs of a diverse students and a community, but do so at the highest level," and quote. "As the board is developing our goals for the new year, and with budget in mind, we ask you to focus on promoting greater awareness of inclusivity and racial equity." And we have some suggestions for the board that we'd like to share with you based upon the work we've done in our district and in surrounding communities. We ask that you bring together a diverse group of stakeholders to review and advance a comprehensive equity plan for our entire district that will focus on racial equity and educational programs and services to include the following: work to identify and eliminate systemic barriers that exist or could exist, and predetermine a student's opportunities and achievement in education; review and ensure all of our curriculum in all subject areas are written in a manner that addresses issues of equity in our classrooms, as well as include diverse perspectives and experiences; work to raise the achievement of all students and narrow any achievement gaps that exist based on race, gender, or background; ensure a more diverse demographic in our AP honors and advanced level classes by reexamining placement practices each year; mandate and provide high-quality professional development for all staff that focuses on cultural competency, racial literacy, and anti-bias training; commit to recruiting and hiring more teachers of diverse backgrounds; provide a variety of courses for students at the secondary level, and opportunities for discussion at the elementary level that specifically foster conversations around race and racial literacy; and finally, implement an equity audit for the district to collect and analyze data to identify any discriminatory trends that impact our educational services and practices. We are a diverse community, and what students learn in schools should reflect that diversity to ensure that all are recognized and represented. Public schools accept people of all backgrounds and identities, and that understanding must be taught and normalized in our schools as well. After the murder of George Floyd and the racially motivated incidences at the high school last June, the board and our superintendent released the following statement, and I quote again, "Education is the great equalizer, and we as a school district are dedicated to working to combat hatred and promote healing. We welcome those courageous enough to ask the uncomfortable questions and who have the patience and compassion to respectfully listen with the desire to acknowledge and embrace the differences between and among us. As we move forward, we're committed to a more equal and just world, beginning with our staff, our students, and our community to create a positive healing climate," end quote. So in conclusion, we feel strongly that as an educational community, we are in fact the great equalizer, and we cannot properly heal until we acknowledge the pain of our past as well as the pain of our present. We're proud to be part of a district that seeks to combat hatred and promote much-needed healing. However, we can no longer afford to be reactive to these hateful incidences in our community or our country. We must be proactive. And as a group, we're asking you to include in your goals and in your budget priorities for the district, a focus on social justice and a dedication to do the work required to advance a positive healing climate for all students. On behalf of Hillsborough Cares, I thank you so very much for your time and your attention, and I appreciate your action on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Tribolski. Any other comments from the public regarding the budget? I see Leila Nashi?
Yes, I'm gonna?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahmoud.
No problem. Ms. Nashi, you are on. If you can unmute yourself, you're welcome to speak.
And actually, if you could also state your name and address for the record, thank you very much.
Forrest, one sec. My name is Leila Nashi. I'm at 35 Murray Drive, and I am a parent of two Woodford students. So I just, I just heard what Mr. Tribolski was saying, and I just was very moving. I think that considering the current racially charged climate in our country, it seems imperative to implement racial equity training and education in our district. I personally work in healthcare, and we take an evidence-based approach when we treat our patients. And data has shown us that people of color have consistently worse outcomes than white people in our healthcare system. And as healthcare providers, we try to address these inequities through education and training. And it seems that the same inequalities have been demonstrated in education. And as a community, we have the responsibility to come together and ensure that racial injustice is addressed and that steps are taken to eliminate it in our community. We need to empower our children's generation to make effective change. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, Ms. Nashi. Any other comments from the public on the 21, 2022 budget? Seeing none, then I will close that portion and open it up to the board for comments or discussion on the budget. None? Okay. All right. Then I will move along to the public input on the action agenda, and I will open it up first to the public. Oh, sorry. Okay, one more person. Oh, Ms. Salinger. Please, if we could have Ms. Salinger promoted. Oh, oh, sorry, the statement got it. I will read the statement as Mr. Mahmoud is promoting Ms. Salinger. So we very much welcome input from the public this one. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do so via Zoom, in person, if they are attending in person, or via written comments sent via letter or email to BOEpubliccomments@https.us. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. If time remains in this public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 167. Before you state your question or comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein. Do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. And prior to Ms. Salinger speaking, I just need to plug in my computer before I get kicked out. So please, just one moment, and I'll be right back. I'm back. Thank you very much. Is Ms. Salinger on?
Amy, you're on. You're, you did, good, you're perfect.
Got it. Good?
Yes.
Okay. Amy Salinger, I am a sixth-grade teacher at Otten Road School, also the HEA treasurer. Good evening and welcome to all of our new board of ed members. I've spoken to the board several times this year, and I believe almost every time I've referenced collaboration. At the time I spoke, I asked about reactivating our district leadership team, or the DLT, of which I am the co-chair. This team was established through our work with the Rutgers School of Labor Management. As a reminder, we entered into this collaborative in the 2018-19 school year, and it's been over a year since the team, since this team last met. As I look at the agenda tonight and reflect on prior agendas, I also think about how collaboration would have benefited many of the items. I also want to reiterate that the use of the term collaboration does not mean HEA gets what they want. A Google search of collaboration offers that it is, quote, "the process of two or more people, entities, or organizations working together to complete a task or achieve a goal." I believe we share many of the same goals. I also believe we differ in other areas. Most importantly, I believe collaboration is the way to achieve our common goals with success and come to mutual understanding where we differ. Do I say again what I've stated before? HEA has been and continues to be ready to collaborate with the BOE and district administration. We look forward to opening the lines of communication and moving forward for the good of our district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Salinger. I'd like to, Henry Goodhue has his hand raised. If we could promote him to panelist?
Fully.
Thank you. Mr. Goodhue, whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, President Trujillo. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to welcome Benjamin Kidd, as we did with all the other new board members, and congratulate them on their election. I would also like to take a moment to thank the board in making a decision tonight that allows our custodial and B&amp;G staff to get home safely. We do appreciate you taking our members' safety into consideration tonight. So, thank you. I would also like to state our support for the initiatives that Dr. Tribolski spoke to tonight. We look forward to those coming to a realization and commit ourselves fully to supporting those with the resources of the HEA, the SCEA, and the NJA. It's an incredibly important initiative, and we're very proud of our members who are involved with that and the commitment that they have made to those, to that undertaking. I raised my hand to speak tonight mainly because of data that has recently emerged from the UK, which many of you may be aware of, where there is a new variant of COVID-19 that created a surge in cases with a noted increase occurring in younger people. The data also suggested that keeping schools open enabled the new variant to spread rapidly. Now, I realize that the district has committed to a reopening plan that was created in August, a plan that was built upon a foundation of, quote, "minimal standards," and one that has not been updated to reflect the ever-changing nature of the pandemic. In fact, if we reflect on those district reopening committee meetings, those who were there will remember that the HEA repeatedly advocated for HVAC improvements and for a plan to address the possibility of COVID-19 being transmitted through the air. In these meetings, these concerns were dismissed, if not openly ridiculed. Months later, airborne transmission is an accepted fact, yet the district's reopening plan has never been reconsidered. With the state's lessening of safety protocols recently, specifically those governing quarantines while the region is in high, we see even weaker minimal standards and increased risk for our students and our members. The district is not required to adhere to these weakened procedures, but like many others, have embraced the change with little regard to the message that it sent to the members or to the students. I recognize that the root of these lesson protocols lies with the state, and I have made my concerns known there as well, but I cannot understand how the district continues to rely upon a plan created almost six months ago, when the situation has changed so dramatically. Would the district ever take such a stilted, myopic approach to learning? The answer is no. So why is such an approach permitted when it comes to the safety of students and staff? No steps have been taken to communicate or collaborate on these issues. No action has been taken to address the new challenges of this situation. In fact, since the district reopening committee meetings ended in August, we have had virtually no meetings with upper administration, let alone the monthly ones that were typical of previous years. The board and HEA have repeatedly stated their desire to collaboratively address the difficulties facing our district, and I believe that this sentiment is sincere. So I must ask why we find ourselves in this stagnant position, again, with a budget, with an agenda where we are losing dedicated staff members and watching the challenges facing our district map? What is missing? What hinders the progress that is so sorely needed? What obstacles prevent the success that we all desire? If the board is truly committed to collaboratively moving the district forward, and I believe that you are, I urge you to do so soon. Commit to revisiting the reopening plan, reconvene meetings, create in-district testing, and take a stand that if public schools are open, staff need an option of a vaccination. Numerous other districts have created petitions to the governor or sent letters supporting this stance. They have monthly meetings with board members, union officials, and administrators to discuss these challenges and to discuss these challenges and create plans to address them. We should do so too. These are small steps in addressing our challenges that will yield big results, and the choice is the boards to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodhue, for your comments. I'd like to, I think Ms. Mailer was next.
Surely. Okay, Ms. Mailer, Ms. Mailer, you're on. Are you just muted? No video, just name and address, and you could start. Ms. Mailer, if you can hear us, you're on mute, and there's no video.
I'm mute and unmute my video.
There you go.
No, no video, they said.
No, they want video. Thank you. Anna Mailer, 11 Hunt Club Road. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to share my thoughts on the topic of racial healing as it pertains to national events and to our district goals. I'd like to start not so much by introducing myself, but by identifying myself, not with my status as a community member or with my credentials as a school counselor. That's not what's relevant at this moment. What is relevant is that I'm speaking to you as a white person. And with my whiteness, I am automatically conferred certain privileges. I benefit greatly from certain advantages. For example, I do not have to worry that anyone will assume I am speaking for all white people. I do not have to worry about being targeted by racial slurs for anything that I say here this evening. And I'm reasonably certain that if I'm pulled over by a police officer, I will arrive home safely. I've been white my entire life. But the awareness that I'm part of and that I identify with a racial group called white people is not something I've always understood. And yet, I believe it is the most important privilege of all to grasp. It is essentially saying that whiteness need not be examined because it's the norm, the standard by which all other races are to be measured. In other words, white supremacy. Grappling with the implications of "what does it mean to be white?" has forced me to take an uncomfortable look at my implicit biases, my privileges, my assumptions, and my blind spots. I have faced feelings of ignorance, guilt, fragility, anger, despair, especially when I think of the enormity of the racial divide that persists in our country. And yet, I remain hopeful that racial healing is possible. In part, that hope stems from the conversations that I've had with my colleagues in our Borough Cares meetings over the last seven months. This group provides what I call a brave space, where we come together and address these issues as a collection of peers, leaving our titles behind, showing up as our human selves. It has led to the formation of the student group called HMS Cares. And if you need a reason to hope for our future, you are welcome to come and listen to our students talk about racial healing. Another space for stimulating dialogue has taken place in the dozens of turnkey courses I have facilitated and attended on topics related to equity and social justice over the past several years. I cannot tell you how pleased I am that the district has expanded the turnkey program to include these topics. If you are interested, I would be more than happy to present my anti-racism courses to the board and anyone else who is interested. I have been humbled over and over in these conversations, especially by people of color. I have learned that we white people do not know everything and are especially blind when it comes to our whiteness. I realize that we must actively seek out the voices, the experiences, and the expertise of Black, Indigenous, Latinx, Asian, and all the other peoples of color to open us up to the full range of humanity. We must also include the voices of other marginalized people, like the LGBTQ+ community, and then shut up and listen. Conversations are humbling, enlightening, and necessary, but they are not sufficient for true change. Real change happens when policies change, when institutionalized racism is dismantled. I have lived and worked here for over 20 years, and almost everyone in leadership positions in this district and in this community is white. Whether we are talking about the board, the HEA, the administration, the supervisors, the township committee, law enforcement, those who hold the power, make policy, decide what is a priority, serve as gatekeepers, control the funding, et cetera, are primarily white. As the people with power in our educational system, it is your responsibility to actively seek participation and representation of the non-white members of the community by opening doors, meetings, committees, hiring practice, curriculum, libraries, opening our district to represent and include the full range of humanity, all voices, all perspectives, all experiences, not overwhelmingly white ones. Our country was established on the revolutionary idea that it was unfair for the British government to impose taxation without representation. So if we are to remain true to our American ideals, I leave you to consider, is it equitable? Is it just to have education without representation? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mailer. I next see Ms. Gordon, who is in the attendee room. We could promote her. And then may I also have a time check regarding the 30-minute periods that we had talked about?
Yes, we have nine minutes left in that 30-minute period.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you. I'm Dana Gordon for Dumont Round. Firstly, welcome Mr. Kidd to the board and to the board in honor of National School Board Recognition Month. Thank you for the time you volunteer for us. We really appreciate it. It's a lot of work, and we understand that you're doing that for us. Thank you. I've been compiling data, which I've been sharing with you at the meetings, and I started this as a project this summer to understand how cases were growing. Tell me, determine what my summer would hold for me. I get the impression that some of you might think I like to focus on negatives, and that's not the reason I share this information with you. I share this information because it include, because including parents and guardians, trusted adults. The Hillsborough Township Public Schools touch over one-third of our population. Nineteen percent of the township's population are students in the district, and the school is looked at as a resource. We, as a community, need to stay informed and engaged. So I'm excited to tell you that after 12 weeks, we have seen our first decrease in cases in our town. Last week's number was 28.57 per 100,000 daily. While this is exciting news, it's important to understand that the decrease is in no way a low number or is it out of the Cali High Zone of the Orange. I want to advise that we shouldn't celebrate this success or become complacent with our guidelines that we have set forth. New Jersey reported a high case count on Saturday, and today we had 41 new cases, with over a quarter of them being ages zero to 19. If we can continue to reinforce social distancing guidelines, support our contact tracers, wear our PPE, and maybe we'll start seeing a steady decrease and a consistent decrease. I want to thank Mrs. Trujillo and Dr. Antunes for explaining how we are reporting our cases. This should clear up some misconceptions that I've been seeing that have been causing conflicts that were hard to watch. Lastly, I wanted to remark on an accomplishment some of the students in the district had. There is a program called the Borough Buddies Program that was part of aftercare, but due to the current situation, they went all online. I am so impressed with these students, especially my daughter's mentor. He's fantastic. This week, the program introduced other activities for the students, such as a singing class, a talent show, a craft, and a STEM activity. And this is all just for the students. You can just sign up for it. And being home, these activities and opportunities have been fantastic for my daughter because she's home with me all day as well. And I want to just, just say, great job to the Borough Buddies, and I just wanted to say I'm really impressed with our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. And then I see somebody named Stephen that has the hand raised. Thank you very much, Mr. Mahmood.
No problem.
And Stephen, whenever you're ready, if you could just state your name and address for the record, and then please begin.
Sure. Stephen Hobson, Beechwood Circle. My daughter is a senior at HHS. And I would like to know if there's any way I could find out what the plan is and contingency plans for graduation this year.
Thank you very much for your comments. I don't think we're prepared to answer questions during the public input session, but we will review that with the administration and report back at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your question. And I'm not seeing any further hands raised in the waiting room, so I will now close public comments. And then let me just, okay. So I just wanted to comment on some of the public comments that we had. And perhaps, Dr. Antunes, if it's appropriate, perhaps the Education Committee with Ms. Maroon could talk about the, the comments from Dr. Trabolsky and Ms. Mailer is perhaps to discuss that in Education Committee further? Is that?
Sure. These are discussions that we can absolutely take into Education Committee. Dr. Feltry and I have been very active with Medley and the people that both Dr. Trabolsky and Ms. Mailer discussed. So absolutely, we can certainly discuss that in Education Committee with Dr. Trujillo.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Maroon, for taking the lead on that as the committee chair. And one thing that we have, so as I had discussed at previous board meetings, Dr. Antunes and I are talking very closely about the plan to reopen schools and what that would look like. And I don't think it's obviously the purview of one board member. It would be all nine of us to, to better advise and actually have communications and discussion with administration per Mr. Gillette's recommendation, that the board needs to kind of figure out what it's doing first. I would like to announce an ad hoc committee for a board reopening of schools committee with the membership being Mr. Gillette, Ms. Stats, and Ms. Maroon, and myself, with Mr. Marini as the alternate, that we will hopefully meet between now and the next board meeting and have a preliminary report on that, if that is amenable to the members that I had listed. So, and that, I think, completes what I had wanted to say. If there's any other comments from the board? And I'm not seeing any, so then perhaps we can move on to the action agenda. Thank you very much, Dr. Antunes.
Ms. Trujillo. Okay. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows, 11.1 to 11.5. Motion to approve new book and textbooks. Motion to approve professional travel-related expenses. Motion to approve curriculum writing. Motion to submit the grant applications. You see them outlined for Mr. Fenster. The motion to accept 2019-2020 carryover for IDEA. And that is it for education.
Great. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. A second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Oliver. And a roll call now. Oh, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mr. Gillo. I'm just gonna let Mr. Kidd know. You will be first, so I'll call your name first. I just didn't want to surprise you. So just unmute, and you can vote as you please. But I just didn't want to surprise you. But I'll start with Mr. Kidd. Yes, thank you. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda as follows, 12.1 to 12.13. Motion to approve retirements and resignations as listed. And I'd like to point out our bus driver, Christine Briskie, who serviced the students in Hillsborough for 26 years. Nancy Carroll, a school nurse, who left us in the very beginning of the year for seven years. And Joanne Getz, who's leaving us after 31 years of dedication to our students. So thank you to all of them. Motion to approve contract changes and to rescind the co-curricular advisor contract as listed. Motion to revise the co-curricular contract and approve revised mentoring. Motion to approve revised leaves of absences and to approve leaves of absences. Motion to approve appointments as listed. Motion to approve coaches and student teaching. Motion to approve sixth and seventh-period coverages, extra coverages, and motion to approve group changes.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion? Was that Ms. Maroon? Thank you, Ms. Maroon, and a second?
Okay.
Ms. Stats, thank you. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mr. Kidd?
I'm staying.
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda as follows, 13.1 to 13.6. Motion to approve monthly financials. Motion to approve monthly bills. A motion to accept the fiscal year 2020 audit. Motion to accept donations as listed. Motion to approve its settlement agreement. And a motion to approve the resolution for HES roof and paving project.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Gillette, and a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Kidd. Any discussion or questions? Our bond counsel, Ms. Gorab, is on the line if there are any questions on the Resolution 13.6. Nope. So I'm seeing no questions from the board on this?
If you want, Ms. Trujillo, Ms. Gorab is prepared to do a quick overview before we take the vote. That's up to you.
I'm sure that would be good for the public to understand what we're voting on. Thank you, Ms. Gorab. Thank you, Mr. Mahmood.
You.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. I understand the board has two projects at the Hillsborough Elementary School that are underneath to be undertaken. One is the paving, some site improvements, and the other is the roof. And this, this action tonight, this resolution, is a very preliminary and doesn't bind the board to any action on the lease purchase of those improvements. What the resolution does is merely authorize the conduct of a public hearing at your February 8 meeting and authorizes the publication of the notice of that public hearing. A lease purchase for this type of project is a not-to-exceed-five-year lease purchase. That is a vehicle to finance projects over a period of time as opposed to using a one-time charge or capital reserves. So the resolution this evening would just allow a public hearing. The improvements can be financed by further resolution, either in whole or in part. For example, if the public hearing is on a proposed not-to-exceed-2.2-million-dollar financing, the board can finance less than, than that and can finance just a portion of the project using its own funds for the other portion. So really, the resolution just sets up the ability to have a public hearing, which is statutorily required. Going forward, there would be further planning, determination of the precise amount that would be financed, and the application would be submitted to the Department of Education. A lease purchase is a financing vehicle that is a shorter term, up to five years. We seek proposals for the interest rates, which are terrifically low right now. We seek proposals for the interest rates, which are terrifically low right now. But all of those things would occur after the public hearing is conducted and the board further considers the lease purchase.
Thank you very much for that explanation, Ms. Gorab. Are there any questions from the board members on what Ms. Gorab had shared? Seeing none, then may we please... So we did a first and a second, so maybe please, Mr. Mahmood, have a roll call. Thank you.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer, thank you. Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trujillo? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahmood. And that concludes the action agenda. So now I will turn it back over to comments from the board and public. And I do want to talk actually about board goals just briefly. We heard some new information tonight from Dr. Trabowski that Ms. Maroon will review with the Education Committee members. And I believe that all of the committees, as they reported out, had talked about the two goals that seemed to rise to the top, which was policy review and the second being improved communications with all stakeholders. And I wanted to just hear from board members, if you would, if there were any additional goals that you would like the board to consider? I mean, two is fine. But if there's anything that's pressing that you'd like to share, please, this would be your opportunity. Thank you. Mr. Pulsofer?
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. I just wanted to add that, you know, I think we talked early on, and certainly the presentation from Ms. Thornton from the NJSBA talked about auditing our policies to make sure we were in line and we were up to date. I would like to ask that we go even further than that and continue with some of the discussions we've had already tonight. So much that we put in our policies is about making sure we don't do things wrong. And I think when we start to talk about issues of equity and dealing with racism, gender inequity, and LGBTQ, in all those cases, it's more... We need to do more than just not do things wrong. We need to make sure that we're doing things right. And I think we need to not just review our policies with respect to being up to date, but to make sure that our policies demonstrate and push us to make sure we're doing the right things about equity and fighting racism and other inequalities. And I also think we should look at that also from the perspective of curriculum in the same way that we make sure that we look at our curriculum and make sure that, you know, we really are covering the subjects that for too long have been left out. And I'll admit, I have not done a great job of educating myself. Over the last summer, there was a significant amount of news about Juneteenth, which I think is a very critical day and a critical event in the history of the treatment of Blacks and African-Americans in the country. And I looked through a number of history books that we've used in the past in the district, and I realized they're not the current ones, but I suspect I would see the same. There was no mention of Juneteenth. And that is such a critical event to not even be mentioned in our textbooks. So I think I would also charge our curriculum, and this may be going more into the administrative side than the board side, but I think we need to think about this, that making sure that our curriculum is also covering the topics that really need to be covered that have been, for so long, ignored or just not paid attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsofer. Any other board comments?
Any comment?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Go ahead.
I agree with Mr. Pulsofer's comments, but I think it actually may be a good idea, you know, I'm just throwing this out there, but in terms of applying those goals to the history curriculum, possibly in each section of history that's taught in a unit, that we can go over significant African-American figures there and also significant contributions of theirs to the world events going on at that time. I feel like a lot of the problem is we have Black History Month, and I'm definitely happy that we have Black History Month because we're able to highlight figures that don't often get talked about. But we need to make it so that this is a consistent conversation, not one that happens in spur of the moment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kidd. Any other board comments? Seeing none, then I will open it up to the public. And the same thing goes with 20-minute periods. This is the second 20-minute period on which you... This is the... Any topic? Any topic? So let's see. We have Ms. Neal in the... If we could have Ms. Tiffany Neal? Thank you, Mr. Mahmood.
No problem.
Ms. Neal, you're on. You just muted? Still muted. There you go.
Thank you. My name is Tiffany Neal at Six Cedar Hill Terrace. As a public health professional and a Hillsborough parent, I urge you to support healthy school hours starting in the fall of 2021. I know that dealing with COVID-19 is the priority right now, but as we focus on health and safety, we also need to think longer term. We all want what's best for our kids, and healthy school hours have a huge impact on students. Extensive scientific research shows that starting middle and high school later improves physical health, mental health, and academic success among teenagers. When kids hit puberty, their biological clock shifts later. Most adolescents cannot fall asleep before 11:00 PM, even if they turn off their screens and try to go to bed earlier. Schools that start before 8:30 AM prevent teens from getting the eight to 10 hours of sleep they need. As board members, you have the opportunity to make a real difference in our students' lives by implementing healthy school hours across the district. As Mr. Pulsofer just said, instead of just not doing things wrong, you can do things right. National Education and Medical Associations recommend starting both middle and high school after 8:30 AM. By doing so, we would give our students many benefits: lower risk of depression, anxiety, and suicide; reduced substance use and risk-taking; healthier body weight and lower risk of heart disease; lower rate of car accidents; better academic performance; and improved equity, which was also emphasized by Dr. Trabowski. The benefits are clear. Hillsborough should adopt healthy school hours. I understand that there are many considerations about school start times, including staffing, transportation, sports, and childcare. However, other school districts have found ways to make it work, and we can too. Our students' health should carry more weight than convenience or logistics. What are the next steps? I asked the school board to form a task force that includes board members, administrators, teachers, parents, and students. This group should learn more about the benefits of healthy school hours, hear community input, and develop specific proposals that work for our town. There is growing momentum for healthy school hours across the state and the country. For example, California has passed a bill requiring all high schools to start at 8:30 or later. Rather than waiting for a law that mandates healthy school hours, let Hillsborough be a leader in promoting student well-being. Start the process now so that we can implement the change in the fall of 2021, and our students will feel the impact of improved physical health, mental health, and academics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Neal. And I'm looking in the waiting room or the... And I'm not seeing if there is any further comment from the public. Otherwise, I will close public comments and then open it up one more time to the board, if the board has any comments or on any topic. Okay. Seeing none, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsofer. A second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Maroon, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed abstentions? All right. Good night. Our next board meeting will be on February 8th? Hang on, let me just double-check. Monday, February 8th. Thank you very much. Be safe and see you then. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Everybody.
Thank you.